HDMR.
Okay, folks, we are ready to go. I would, good evening, I'd like to open the Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday, December 10th, 2014 Planning Board meeting. We'll begin with approval of minutes, November 12th, 2014. Anybody have any?
Harry did it once, he shared it already.
Yeah, which is good.
Instead of "as," I had something else.
Did you press the same button twice?
Just to formalize it, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve minutes of November 12th, 2014.
Thank you.
I second it.
Second, all right. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a comment, which is why I was trying to find it on the video, because I wasn't sure I remembered right, but on page three. I just want to explain that the reason you put in there abutters, either they're for it or against it, or the people that are in the audience, yes or no people for your application.
What line, what line do you like?
It's 99, that paragraph. The way I interpreted what you had written was that only if there was a denial on an application, did you want to put in abutters or audience participation who denied it. It looked like if they were approving it and agreeable to the application, you didn't seem to want to put it in the minutes. That's the way I interpreted what you wrote. So, the thing about it is, is if in fact the board wants to deny an application, you want to have the people in the audience in your decision, you don't have to give their names, but you have to say that there was two or three people, or they lived in the abutting area, and they also objected. And if it's an approval for a special permit or whatever, then you also want to put in people that had no comment or agreed to it, or there was nobody in the audience to object. I think that statement has to be there, because what you do, as you know, it's really a legal document that you were going to compose, and you want all that you can to support your decision, whatever it is.
Are there any changes in the minutes you'd like to propose?
It's on page three, did you see that, number nine?
Ninety-nine, I see, would you like to change that in some way, or?
I think she put in her interpretation, that's what I think. It wasn't really a summary.
How would you like to change it?
Yeah, but that's not for the decision, that was one of your suggestions during the previous meeting, just to make note of any comments from abutters, and that's all it's supposed to say, in that you had all discussed that there were no objections, and so.
But you put in the decision on the second 100 line, the decision even though both the board and the town planner did not recall.
That there had been any objections.
Yeah.
Right.
Nor were there any comments, so all of that was added on, wasn't it?
No, you did discuss that.
Yeah, we talked about it, but I don't, that's why I couldn't remember.
Right, that was, you discussed that you didn't think there had been any comments from the public during.
Yeah.
So, what is here was, is an accurate representation of what was discussed, and I think what I'm hearing you say, Tilly, is that you would like to know that if there are people who are from the public who are abutters that have something to say and disagree with the plan or against the plan, that there would be a line that says three people from the public were against, four were for.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, sorry.
Would that work?
Yeah.
We've done that in a previous decision, just over minutes, just recently.
Yeah.
So, we can do that in.
So, basically, no changes to the minutes at any rate, or are there other directions?
I think, okay, forget it.
If you have it all set for the change.
I just want to clear it up. I don't have it all set for the change, because I didn't know verbatim, because like I said, I tried to, I tried to look at the video and it was on the wrong. What did you say it was the wrong, what was, why did I get the school committee on this state instead of us?
Oh, it sounds like the link was wrong on the YouTube video.
That's all.
All right, then, anything else, Tilly?
The other comment I had on page three. This was, this was the comment that I put in about the.
Which number are you on?
On, um. 117, about the erosion control and general appearance of the site. Construction phase be deleted. Um, and then you had one other reference for. You had on page four, you referenced again erosion control on number 154. The planner and the board also discussed the fact that the erosion control that would not be under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, I felt that was not decided when we discussed it, and furthermore, I feel that if it was, then as the planning board, we have no jurisdiction over that bylaw at all. So, to make a statement like this, that the Conservation Board would not have this hearing for the erosion control and storm drain bylaw is erroneous. I mean, that, you don't, never want, I would say you never, maybe sometimes, but most likely you don't say whether a board is going to hear a bylaw, which is their responsibility. And furthermore, the first one who's responsible is the building inspector determined, but it's not for another board to say, no, you're not going to do it. It's up to those.
That's the way it reads, but I don't think that's what the board was discussing. I think the board was discussing that anything that is not in the jurisdiction of CONCOM in terms of erosion control would be looked at whenever the site inspecting engineer was at the site. So, with.
So, how do we change this to reflect that?
That's the minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a clarification.
Yeah.
That should be.
So, what?
I would just end the sentence, the planner and the board will discuss the fact concerning the erosion control period, and that the rest of that shouldn't be there.
Perhaps we could just eliminate the fact, the words "the fact," and change that to "the question of the erosion control."
Right. And then the other one now.
So, do you guys, did you guys get that?
Instead of the fact, just change it to the question.
Yeah.
I really didn't know what you were talking about here, subsection P on 117. Before I suggested that under subsection P, which states the inspection engineer shall provide a spot check into erosion control and general appearance of the site, the act first be deleted, but that's, that's his job. If he gets on board and he sees that there is erosion going on, he's supposed to address that. You know, and you have it here be deleted.
That was right.
What do you guys think?
I think that's probably accurate, the statement, that that was what was reflective of the minutes, and I think we're taking this out of a little bit of context, because we were doing some changes to the decision, the wording of the decision. And I believe it was handled in another one of the paragraphs, although I don't know whether it was before or after letter P.
Perhaps two or three people were talking at once, but I didn't get that.
It was redundant at that point, because it was reflected in another paragraph.
Yeah.
So, what I'd like to do is either delete that whole paragraph there, or give it back to Planning Department to check out what that really needs to be.
I'd check out the DVD or check it out.
I think you could just eliminate that, I mean.
Yeah, I would eliminate.
You know, there's a lot of detail here.
Okay, so that's.
Did you, did you in fact do that in the decision?
No.
You didn't delete that, okay.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr. Harry?
There was only one thing that I changed.
Okay, so, seeing there's no more discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded?
Two abstain.
Me.
Or two absent. Okay, correspondence, Howard, anything you want to?
Correspondence, I included the email I received from the attorney for Artisan Development regarding the deed for parcel F, and that's included under new business. And then, also, we received a letter from Hayes Engineering that was a memorandum they sent to the police department regarding the sightline configuration at Pingree Road. Pingree Road, this is the property where Tolman had the A&R, so.
Why did they send it to us now? Why did they, well, they didn't send it to us, they sent it to Don Cudmore.
Right.
Just point of information, even though the board at this point has absolutely no say over what happens there.
When I read that, and I saw the pictures, which are great, how did they get on the road where there's only one car, and then there's no cars? One thirty-three.
To note the flaw in the report, it was done at non-peak times of track.
Is there anything else that anybody really has to talk about with correspondence, or?
No.
Want to vouchers?
Vouchers, we've got the maintenance agreement with ESRI to keep up our annual subscription to the GIS software. Gatehouse Media, the legal ad for the SOWR, that we were, was it the SOWR?
Two of them.
What's that?
The definitions and the SOWR.
Yeah, for Special Town Meeting. And then, also, is $16 for the Mary Ellen's nameplate.
Great, she got a name.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the vouchers in a total of $1,231.11.
Second.
That's been motioned and seconded to approve the free vouchers in a total amount of $1,231.11. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two absent, okay. Next up, A&R. We're going to have to. Do we want to wait for any other members at this point for the A&R? Or kick the A&R off, and then we'll close down until they show up for, because I haven't heard that they're not coming.
I haven't heard either.
Okay.
Is there any other business that we can do beside the A&R?
Public or the new business, I think the other stuff.
The Planning Office, all that can be done.
Let's go there. Let's go there. You guys all right with that going there?
I'm fine waiting for the other members.
Do you want, do you want to wait?
Yeah.
All right.
For the A&R, for the public hearing, by all means.
Oh, of course for that.
Give the applicants.
So, we're just going to, we're going to go to the Planning Office, is what I'm talking.
Go for it.
Yeah. We will, all right, so let's go to the bottom of the agenda, under Planning Office.
There's five items I wanted to inform the planning board about. The first was, we received the training program from Merrimack Valley Planning Commission about the upcoming schedule for citizen planner training. Mary Ellen and I will be continuing, and always encourage board members to go and get refreshed on any items of their interest. The second item, I wanted to let the planning board know that we submitted a grant to the capital improvement planning committee, technical grant requesting funding over five years. For, these grants would go towards digital coordination of dataset information, and what I mean by this is, if you recall, the planning board approved last year, MIMAP being accessible to the general public instead of just town departments. The next step is to bring more information into the data that's presented on GIS, information such as transformer location, fire hydrant location, water valve locations, those are the easy ones. The next step, in terms of, if this grant's given, is the ability to purchase a tablet, load some software on from Merrimack Valley, which will be supporting us through this, and they're able to go out and field verify as well as take pictures. So, all that information will be brought back in, and it's an idea that if this information is available on MIMAP, emergency responses can be reduced, which will help with the insurance rate that town of Georgetown pays, as well as anybody that is interested in a property of Georgetown would go to the website and have much more information available to them.
So, in the first year, the light department would get the tablet, they'd have use of it for a year, and second year, the water department would have it, third year, the highway department would have it, and the fourth year, the fire department would have it.
An example of highway is, they can go out and they can GIS imprint, and you'll see it in MIMAP, all locations of all 1,800 catch bases, which doesn't seem like a benefit, but it also allows them to make sure that all the catch bases are cleaned out.
Culverts.
Culverts as well.
So, Peter would be involved with it as well.
He would, he would.
That's wonderful.
Eventually, it's the idea that tax cards can be available for each property and so forth.
Great idea.
At the last meeting of the zoning board of appeals, I met with the ZBA, the Affordable Housing Task Force was presenting their final version of what is.
Can we just go back to the CIP request?
Oh, sorry.
How was it met, the request went in, you submitted it?
Submitted it, I went to the CIPC's meeting, public meeting on it, and just presented the purpose and intent of it all.
Excellent.
They had a few questions, everyone thought it was a great idea.
Is this, will the CIP be issuing a report that, well, I know they issue a report, but they issue it, how does that work now? I know we changed the bylaw, it goes directly to the finance committee, but is?
They make recommendations to the FINCOM.
Yeah.
And honestly, I don't recall what happens if it's FINCOM or the Selectmen are after that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we.
I haven't heard if they approved or voted for it or not yet, so.
Okay.
That's my next thing to follow.
Yeah, what was the outcome?
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully it'll go well.
So, you're paying $15,000 for the planning and design engineering, and then you're going to pay $1,800 for, not $15,000, $1,500?
Right.
And then $1,800 for contracted services?
Right.
For how long is that?
The breakdown that happens to each department is basically for one year. And $1,500 is access to the license of the program for a year, as well as purchasing the tablet, which we keep. And then, I included some estimated costs that will be incurred by the department, either by paying an intern or paying a staff person to offset their costs, which is part of it, as well as some miscellaneous expenses such as gas and driving around, because it's expected that it's going to take three to four months in a lot of places, instances, it's walking. And, for instance, with the light department, they have all this information laid out, hard copy, and so they're get a customized spreadsheet interface with this tablet on how to put it in. And so, when they go out to, if there's an accident and the pole's damaged, they can pull it up instantly, find out the age, what's on it, the number, and everything else, and so that takes a while to input, and then the efficiency is gained after that. I can't remember, it's something, I don't know how many poles he has in town, but it.
What is it, every thousand feet on the street?
At least.
Is it, no, it's, no, it's 100, isn't it?
Yeah. It's closer than a thousand.
She said, I've got a thousand, oh, great.
Yeah.
A hundred.
The next one, for $8,000, over the course of four years, that's pretty short money for that kind of GIS data. Short money.
Yeah. It's almost, Merrimack Valley is a consultant for $1,000, so.
Yeah, and it will last forever?
Once this information is digitized, it's our database, and how accurate it is is then up to each town department to.
Follow up.
And it's assumed that if there's a service call to replace a transformer, he goes back, and then he does update to his database, and then there's, just like the tax assessor, they do an annual update with Merrimack Valley on tax lots. They would feed on an annual basis any changes that were made to their database.
So, that's critical, the follow-up.
Yeah.
And they roll on board, huh?
Yeah, they were.
Especially important for the.
The different departments roll on board.
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
The zoning board of appeals, as I mentioned, I went to the last zoning board meeting, December 2nd. The Affordable Housing Task Force was discussing with the zoning board, the affordable accessory apartment bylaw, that they are proposing. A copy of what they presented to the zoning board was included in your packet. I haven't received an updated or revised copy from the task force, so I don't know if it's been revised as an outcome of that meeting, but it's expected that they'll provide me with an electronic copy. Once that's received, then I'm going to issue a public hearing notice in the papers, and the planning board will take it up as an amendment to the bylaw.
Did you get a written response from the zoning board?
I didn't get a written response, but I requested, and they met my request of, could you just formalize the opinion of the board with a vote, and they voted unanimously.
Great.
To recommend the bylaw to the planning board to take up, for the planning board to review ahead of annual town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, would not be a good time to deal with a few M accounts?
I think it would, Harry.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, I vote to release the escrow funds for account number 26501.
Second.
So, it's been motioned and seconded to release the M account, the monies for the M accounts, number 26501, 124 Tenny Street. Any discussion? No discussion?
I just want to quickly mention the fact that I went out with John Mativier, we did a site walk to confirm what he's done out there in the site plan. You are copied in your packet, a letter from the engineer, which is a requirement of our site plan, stating that he's built per plan, and he's done a wonderful job. If you haven't driven by it, it's hard to notice that it's actually in additional use. He's got a nice building out in front, the warehouse building's in the back, so.
So, it blends in the neighborhood.
He did a nice job of it.
Wonderful.
Actually, I missed that letter, I didn't catch it.
I didn't see it either.
As long as.
It's great.
Certainly take your word for it, Holly. Especially where it was your eyes out there.
Any more discussion?
Not at all.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, two absent. Mr. H.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to release the escrow funds for account number 26473, which is Whistlestop Realty.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to release the funds in the account, M account, number 26473, Whistlestop Realty Trust. Any discussion?
No, I just want to mention that, as stated on the certificate of vote, it was a development permit application that was withdrawn by the applicant back in 2007. This is probably the last one that we're going to see of making it an easy release of funds due to withdrawal. And I mention that because we have, in the last two years, reduced the number of funds that we need to regulate through these M accounts from close to 50 down to just about 22. And four of those, five of those are still active. So, we're getting closer, but the age of them are going farther out.
All right, seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
If I may just ask one technical question? I'm seeing the escrow agreement was made with Vault Paid Realty Trust.
Yes.
And is that what we're releasing?
The voucher states Vault Paid Realty Trust.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I'm ready to vote on that anyway.
Oh, I didn't do that either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, two absent. Okay, so, we have one other item in Planning Office.
Submitted in your packet was our currently proposed operating budget for fiscal year 16, which needs to be submitted to FINCOM for review. It's basically the same amount as the previous year, it's just some of the line items have been adjusted to reflect changes in need of the Planning Office. And an instance of that is, we're running more efficiency, we need less in terms of office supplies, but there was an increase in the line item for administrative assistant in the town planner to attend conferences or other educational seminars. One thing that should also be clarified, in terms of these line items, is there has been a change from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 16, with the sole adaption of the Massachusetts uniform code. So, the light item description has slightly changed, that's another reason why some of these numbers have increased and decreased, because as we made this transition into a uniform line code, the line code of 5650 may be different from 2011, 2014 to now, so.
And thank you for the inclusion of the entire code.
Yeah.
This is about the third time we've changed these numbers and gotten this software.
Well, this is the final. Department of Revenue evolves.
Any questions from anybody here, or motion process?
So, if the fiscal year 16 budget as shown is satisfactory to the board, then I can just submit it as final copy to the town administrator's office in FINCOM.
Howard.
Do I have it?
It's the last page.
Just a very quick question.
I'm sorry.
Is this going to be adequate for our equipment needs in the office?
I believe so. This past year, we've already purchased, the town planner has a new laptop, we've updated the software on both, and we, as you recall, joined up with other of the town departments and purchased a full-size color scanner plotter.
Right.
So, it's not known what large investments may be needed of the planning office in future.
I was thinking for like inks and things like.
I was thinking for like inks and things like that, and where that maintenance and inks would be coming from.
Well, we, as part of the purchase of the plotter. The planning board, uh along with the other departments, um bought a fresh supply. We now have backup ink for the full-size plotter scanner. And it's basically agreed that everybody would take their turn with replacing the ink, so the planning office won't be the sole. Um purchaser of any inks for even.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
We should put that in a budget just in case no one else does.
It probably takes a lot of ink too, it's so big, huh?
It, it's, it's running pretty well. Um, right now, it's primarily, uh primary, primary use is actually scanning. So uh we can uh get drawings scanned in and able to be distributed to different. Departments electronically as opposed to needing to just make copies. Saving on paper.
Do, do you have any uh questions? Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, that's uh, it sounds good to me.
Tim, did you have any questions?
We usually turn back money, how much money do you think we'll be turning back?
Last page, is every last page.
Just a few questions, just clarifications, I totally already have clarified it, but I missed it.
We're not gonna run out of paper clips, right?
Under communications, um going from three hundred to seven fifty. What, what's, what's that for? This is just for understanding, it's not.
Uh, communication, uh under the uniform uh Mass Code. Expenditures for transmitting and receiving messages or information such as telephone. Uh, data processing line, postage, wireless phones, printing and mailing, delivery services.
All gets enveloped.
So the seven fifty, while communication, to me thinks of just electronic phone or something. But this is the line item that we pay the postage meter, if we have to overnight anything.
What, and, and just what, how come it went up over twice, went from three hundred to seven fifty?
Because the line item from the previous year um was for about three fifty, and we had gone through that.
Got it.
Now.
Got it.
With that, when it comes to the town budget, the planning office is actually reen- uh in charge of just two line items. Salary in the planning office, so if we go over, it's okay, because the money's still available in, in, in the fund. If, if we decide to attend more conferences than what we have budgeted here, the money's still there. It's just, this is a great way of, of tracking the, the details of it.
Yep, and I'm just, and I'm just interested in understanding what, what, what it is, um what the actual item is. And then I think it was those last uh three, um there were other supplies, the last three items. Other supplies, travel and mileage and equipment.
Well, travel mileage, uh we expect to be attending more meetings, so there'll be uh more mileage reimbursement requests. Um, equipment. Just anticipating if we do need to buy anything new, then we're considering it here. Last year we had three hundred and, and all the software and the laptops was obviously more than that uh for purchasing. And then other supplies is a little bit of a generic.
That's the paper clip.
Yeah, um, the cost of expendable supplies utilized for purposes not classified. Um, data processing, magazine subscriptions, uniform, library supplies, newspaper subscriptions. Uh, we just wanna make sure we were covered there under other supplies.
Since it's from three fifty up to nine hundred?
It, it was inadequately funded before.
So that seems to be a theme through these, which is part of why they're higher now.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright.
Uh, we, we also expect to, to um not only cover the subscriptions we have now. Uh, we've dropped a few that, that were no longer needed.
Did you drop that one that we have?
The Planner's Journal or something like that.
That, I'm glad you did that, because that.
We've used up our credit and that was over, but um.
In there.
To uh electronic subscriptions and things like that.
Okay, I, I think I just, it, I think it's important for people to understand a little bit of why the increase and. And what I'm hearing is a, is a basic theme through these increases is um that the years before we're not adequately funded. And that's one of the fundamental reasons behind some of these increases.
Quite frankly, uh Neil, don't, don't we usually return money to the, we don't spend all of our budget?
U- usually we don't.
Yeah, we, they return like an average of five thousand, isn't it?
In, in previous years.
Yeah.
Last year we didn't, because we, we.
Yeah, no, we are, I, and it's, it's not, yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not a criticism, it's just, you know, just getting information. Okay, so um. Do you need something?
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion that um Howard present this to the finance committee.
Great.
As noted today.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to uh present the FY two thousand and sixteen budget uh to the finance committee. Uh, via our town planner. Um, any discussion? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, missing one, so I think what we'll do now is, um, I haven't heard anything from Bob. Um, I don't wanna, has anybody heard anything from Bob?
I just texted and asked who coming, I haven't heard, I haven't seen.
Well, how about?
You can go to the A and R.
We've got four people, let's do that, I'm totally comfortable with that. Seeing A and R is pretty straightforward. Okay, so we'll go to the A and R, we're going back up in the schedule to the A and R. If you wanna introduce that, Howard.
Uh, Diane, you, you can come up. The planning board will recall a previous A and R application for this, this property, excuse me, a few months ago. Twenty-seven Andover Street, also known as the Colton Home uh property. And uh the previous A and R that was submitted um in discussion with uh the applicant. It was agreed that the applicant uh should withdraw without prejudice, because we believe that that A and R as proposed. Would create a non-conforming um lot. So they went back and they considered a non-buildable lot, I'm sorry. Uh, they went back, uh reworked the A and R uh lot. And unfortunately, it's technical.
Do we have it planned?
It should've been provided in the packet.
I'm looking at seventy West Main.
Twenty-seven Andover, it's, it's um.
Seventy West Main?
I think it's just a reduced one.
There's a full size here.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you.
And I consulted uh our bylaws as well as with the um zoning code enforcement official. And we uh both agreed that this change represents a buildable lot. And uh again, it does not show that the planning board is reviewing it against zoning. It's just that it's a Form A lot, and it's, can be considered a buildable lot, so. And the current owner is here to answer any questions.
So when we apply, when she applies, she's not, we're not addressing the back lot that this would. That this would make if we approved this front lot?
Uh, the, the lot line is, is here, uh so this will be the new Form A lot.
Right, but this one is, is this lot partial in the back lot, or is it two?
Lot two.
Is that buildable?
I think that's what they're trying to build.
Yeah, the, this, this whole uh twenty-two thousand square foot lot is, is a buildable lot.
Oh, I saw, I saw the solid line here, and I thought that was where they were gonna put two lots.
No, that, that's, that's the dimension just to um address the concern on the previous Form A.
Okay.
Of uh lot depth, which, which was the, the concern we had.
Okay.
Um, and I, I'll make the, the suggestion to the board to consider waiving the, the filing fee for the new A and R.
Because it was already paid once, wasn't it?
Correct, yes.
Mister Chairman. I would like to um make a motion to waive the filing fee for uh twenty-seven Andover Street A and R.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, it's been motioned and seconded to waive the filing fee for the A and R submittal of the plan of land twenty-seven Andover Street Georgetown, Mass. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So um any more, any more discussion on the A and R plan?
I have a quick question if I may ask. Um, Howard, it, correct me, or inform me. Um, right now, today, before this plan is executed. This parcel derives its frontage from Andover Street, hence twenty-seven Andover Street, am I right?
Right.
At, if this plan were to be approved, or endorsed, excuse me. What happens to that frontage on Andover Street, there's, there's not adequate distance, is there? Don't you need, what is that, one twenty-five or something?
It's a corner lot, Harry, so would, wouldn't it be the Cedar Lane as well as Andover?
Because I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not good with corner lots.
I, I believe that the, the, the lot one that you see would, would derive their frontage then on Nelson Avenue. And uh the lot two would derive their frontage from Cedar Lane.
Cedar, okay, so would there be an address change?
I, I believe so.
I would think for that lot, yes, I, I would.
We'll confirm that with the tax assessor certainly.
Okay.
And the nine-one-one coordinate.
Yeah.
More importantly. Not more importantly, but equal, of equal importance.
Well, isn't, isn't the address based on the front door? Isn't that, isn't that how the assessor addresses it? So it would still be um on Andover Street.
I'm not certain how it's done, I'm, I just wanna ensure that. The nine-one-one coordinator is aware of this.
Okay.
And, but i- isn't the driveway off of Nelson anyway?
It is, yes, right, that's, that's the lot you're discussing, the one that, the existing, that has the existing house.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, the driveway's on Nelson, and the, the mailbox is on Nelson.
Okay.
There's no ac- access to it from Andover Street.
And there's no proposed access from, to the new lot.
From Andover, no.
So you avoid all those traffic hazard problems that's off of Cedar, right?
Exactly.
Is that it?
Howard, can you clarify for me, um, it's just a graphic, so for both of those dashed um rectangles. It, there's a note that says minimum lot depth and arrows that go to those lines. And that's, I'm assuming the minimum lot depth is a hundred feet, which is dimensioned. And that is, those lines are really, uh, they should be drawn to the ends, or, or is there something I'm?
The, the dashed lines that have arrows pointing to them, uh referring to the text of minimum lot depth. Is to demonstrate. The conformance of the lot depth to the bylaw, the way the bylaw is written. In the way measurements are taken off of tangents and straight lines. Um.
Got it.
That, that's just to demonstrate the conformance to it.
Okay, that, that explains it, it's graphically a little confusing, but it makes sense.
Where, where did that come from?
That's in the bylaw, but.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So the, I would say because of that being the lot depth, that, that the front door would be on Andover Street in the accessway. Because otherwise, if it was facing Cedar Lane and, and the dots were this way.
The lot depth is going perpendicular to Cedar Lane.
But it should be, it should be on Andover Street. No, if this is lot depth.
Right, it is lot depth.
Then.
I mean, they can, they can orient their house however they want to.
The front doors is irrelevant.
Other than that, it would be lot, if it was off of Andover Street, it would be lot width.
What's the definition of depth? It's the front, and the two sides is what the depths are, but the front has to be Andover Street. I believe that's how the depth is defined. Well, it is. That's how I understood it. So if they were gonna access on in, on Cedar Lane.
Uh, depth of lot, the main distance from the street line of the lot to its opposite real line measured in the general direction of the sidelines of the lot.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that the way it's shown on the plan is correct.
And the, and the front door will be on Andover Street, the accessway.
That would be the side lot.
That's the, that's the, that's the uh side yard.
The, the new dividing line is the back lot line now, for both of the properties.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Frontage from lot one derived from Nelson, frontage from lot two, for lot two derived from Cedar.
Again, listen to him though, listen to the definition.
Right, but you.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask it, ask it this way, who's going to determine wh- where the number, where the num- what the number is? Who makes that determination of the house, number twenty-seven versus thirty-six?
I believe uh numbering of the lot is up to the responsibility of the tax assessor's office.
Okay, so does it really matter what we're talking about right now?
Um, o- only to clarify lot depth.
I think I, I think.
Well, that's a different discussion, because I don't wanna get into front door, back doors.
I think in the file, you're going to find a letter from the assessor requesting the planning board. To clarify where is the front of the, of the property. And that's, then they will determine. So I think if you look in the file, there's an assessor's letter.
Okay.
That, that says uh which direction you go in, and that is, that determines how you place your house on the lot.
Right, but we're not the building inspector.
No, but that's what I, but they sent the letter, the assessor sent it to the planning board.
Um, alright, let's play that one out quickly, let, so let's assume.
You also need to consider the, the, the idea of con- formance to zoning, so.
And as important as what Telly's saying is, uh with respect to the A and R itself and the endorsement thereof.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's something that Howard can follow up with, you know, later on.
Yeah.
Mister. Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we endorse, that the planning board endorse uh plan of land at twenty-seven Andover Street Georgetown, Mass. Land of K C Acquisitions LLC stamped by Peter Kane, Peter J. Kane, Lancer Van. In December one, two thousand and fourteen.
Sorry.
Been motioned and seconded to approve the A and R plan of land twenty-seven Andover Street. To endorse, excuse me, plan of land twenty-seven Andover Street Georgetown, Mass. Prepared by Canlet Kane Land Surveyors, dated December one, two thousand and fourteen. Any uh more discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
The uh MyR is here for the board to sign, please sign it before you leave the meeting.
Alright.
And before we leave the A and R, recall that um there's a Form B to be signed. This is really what formalizes it for the planning board, uh to vote on this. This is not only signed by the planning board, but it's um received by the town clerk and stamped. So this is just a good, uh duplicate effort to formalize it. So you should just vote to sign the, uh, the Form B as well.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. My motion is to endorse the Plan B, the Form B, excuse me, the Form B.
Diane?
Aye.
For twenty-seven Andover Street.
Okay, do I have a second? So it's been motioned to approve the signing of Form B. For the A and R submittal of twenty-seven Andover Street.
Yeah.
In December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Howard, I'm very sorry, I lost your elastic.
There's one right here.
Um, what's the board's pleasure in terms of um moving ahead, uh or, or taking a break for five minutes? Um, I haven't heard.
I'll take a five-minute break, I wanna give it five more minutes. Here's as though the, uh, the applicant representative has left the room anyway.
He's pretty, yeah, he's pretty good though.
He's coming now.
Well, let's do that then.
It's just the discussion, because we're waiting for one more member, so.
Motion to uh have a brief five-minute recess, Mister Chairman?
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, second motion to take a five-minute recess, all in favor?
Aye.
So we will take a five-minute recess from here.
During which you can sign the A and R MyR.
Is it in the file?
All right, Tim.
Good, how are we around?
Good.
It's no rush, but if you wanna sign the MyR, you can. And hi.
Okay. 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 Okay.[755.12]
Was asked was whether the parking spaces were ADA compliant and, and they are. And I brought in the handicap parking regulations from Massachusetts. Um, if you'd like that for any reason or if you'd like it for part of the record.
Can you, can you explain how they are?
Um, the, if there are fourteen parking spaces or less, then there's a whole list of, uh, criteria for handicap parking, including a sign and dimensions and the ability to get in and out in the location of the handicap parking.
Well, this will be something that I've learned then if there's, if, if my understanding was if there was only two parking spaces, one had to be, the one handicap space had to be non-accessible.
Yeah, this is the, the regulations here.
Okay, I'll look at it later.
Are those federal or state?
That's state. It's a com- actually, that's a combination of federal and state, and that is published by the state.
That's the state access boards?
That is, uh, the site is on the bottom of the second page.
Right, well, it's exhibit one in, in the planning board files.
Yep, okay.
Um, one of the other concerns was a handicap parking sign, uh, that it be indicated on the plan. And that has been indicated on the plan, uh, in front of the, um, spot where it shows the handicap, uh, symbol, um, against the building, um, it says reserved for handicapped vehicles sign attached on wall. Uh, the third thing was a fire lane to be indicated on the plan. And, uh, the architect went over and talked to the fire department, as my understanding, they were okay with it as it, as it was. So we didn't put anything in there as far as the fire lane.
Do we have anything in writing from the fire chief?
I do not have the file up here, but, uh, he didn't have any concerns orally with me, but I believe he sent it up. Sorry, I don't have it.
Okay, but he, so he's, he didn't have any problems with it?
Right, right.
All right, all right, so you're talking.
Uh, there was the location of the utilities, gas, septic on plan. And, uh, what is shown here is the, uh, cleanouts and the septic vent. Um, the purpose, I believe, of showing the septic plant is if we were gonna put the dumpster right over it. Uh, we're not gonna do that, we're proposing a putting on the other side. Um, and the architect did, uh, call the board and didn't get, um, uh, didn't get down there in their timeframe for the septic, for the septic system. But the area here, if you look at the cleanout and you look at the septic vent, the septic system's between the two of them. And it's, it's a pretty small area, so it, it, it's pretty obvious where it is. Uh, there really is no other place to put it. Uh, take the legend and have it relate to the plan more, take off some things. I don't think that there were a lot of things taken off, and I apologize for that. I think that was a mistake. Um, existing topography, are there any drainage issues? Um, they're an unknown, it's basically a flat lot. Um, and we talked about it last time that when we went out there, that if, uh, we've had enough rain, that if there was a problem, we'd know it by now. Um, provide information on plant species, materials and locations and attached to plan. Uh, what I've done is I put a letter together that basically goes over the, uh, fence and the plants to be, uh, put in. And, and basically, if you look at the plan, and it would be explained in the letter fairly well, if you look at where the fence is on the abutting property, uh, you can see the square marks and the long lines. At sixty-eight West Main Street. Can you see those okay?
Yeah.
That's where the existing fence is, and, and basically, as the letter explains, so that you have some sort of record to, to show, is that the fence is gonna come right down here as close to the lot line as we can get. It's gonna go within five or seven feet of, of West Main Street. And then along the outside of that fence on the northerly side, as described in the letter, there'll be deciduous, uh, plants about every four feet along the fence here.
Is, is that shown on the plan? I don't see it.
No.
Well, it's in the letter, it's in the letter, so it's submitted with the letter.
It's shown on the plan.
Excuse me?
We'll get to that.
The, the letter, the existing fence is shown on the plan. And the proposed fence is described in the letter.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that.
Um. You asked to produce a permit, uh, for, for the existing signs that were on the property. I did bring them with me, I'm not sure why you wanted them, and if you want them, I can still produce those. These are the permits for the previous signs that were on the property? Is that something that you still want, or?
Yes.
And here's multiple copies.
Yeah, I, is this new information right now to me also?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm gonna enter this as exhibit number two.
Okay. You have the planting letter?
No, I don't.
How about we be exhibit three?
Yeah, I'll make, because that came in testimony seconds, so.
Okay.
The signed permits are exhibit three.
This kind of being really, the letters and all the information, I mean, it really should be submitted last week.
Well, we'll, we will do, we will get to that, and, and I agree with you, let's, just, let's finish this out and hear this out, okay?
Okay. Um, the dumpster, you asked for dimensions, locations, specify concrete paths, dumpster, if any. Indicate a fence surrounding the property, uh, surrounding property screened. Um, put on plan, access with parking, um, and what is the trash pickup gonna be? The trash pickup's gonna be once a week, the dumpster will be picked up. Um, and it shows the location of the dumpster, um, where it was before. And it shows the, um, uh, fence that's gonna go around it, Star Cave Fence.
May, Mr. Chairman, may I ask why it says the location may change?
Uh, for the...
Well, there's an arrow leading to where the dumpster is being shown.
Uh.
And it says proposed metal dumpster.
How about, how about we do this, why don't we, before we start getting into questioning, let, let's let him finish his presentation and then we'll...
If I only it's good.
Um, indicate where the lights are going on the property. If you look at the plan, it shows the existing lights, and those are the lights that are gonna be on the property. Um, it shows the location of all those lights. Um.
Where, where, just where, where are the existing lights on the plan?
Uh, if you look at the elevation plans.
Oh, on the elevation, okay, okay, that's about it, okay, yep.
Um, you asked for the, uh, camera locations, and the camera locations are on the, um, uh, westerly and the easterly side of the bin, building, and they're noted on the plan. You asked about fencing, and that's incorporated in the letter. In particular, the height, the material, um, where it's gonna go, that type of thing. You asked that it, the, the, indicate where the AC unit is on the property, so that was, uh, indicated, that's on the southerly side of the building. You asked that the clarified temporary easement line for bike path, um. The wording was basically changed, uh, to reflect what we talked about at the last meeting. Um, it's proposed, so nothing is, is there yet. Clarification on barriers and screening of property. Um, in the letter, I think it adequately addresses that, and we can talk about that more if you wish. Uh, reflect no loitering, no loitering or no idling, and both of those are on the plan.
Please say no idling?
The no idling is number seventeen on my notes, which is on the, um, westerly side of the building.
Could someone please point that out to me?
I see a no loitering sign.
I see, uh, no loitering, I see two of those. One on the west side, one on the east side, um, like, you know.
I stand corrected, I, I, my mistake, yeah.
Doesn't seem to be on the plan. Well, I think what you did is the old plan had, uh, no, uh, had no idling. And I think it wasn't idling, it was, if they, they changed it to loitering, two no loiterings.
It should be idling, it should be both, really.
Actually, two probably.
Okay, well, we'll, so let's get back to, we'll get back to that.
So if we add no idling to that section under the no loitering, we can put up another sign? If that satisfies you. Um, and, and looking at the situation, I looked at the site plan review, um, rules and regulations. It says the purpose and conditions of approval, the purpose of the site plan approval is to protect the health, safety and convenience and welfare of the inhabitants of Georgetown. And it goes through, the following conditions have to be met, and it talks about one through seven. And in one, it talks about the location of buildings, uses and other site development, uh, properly located on the site. Um, it's an existing building, I don't know of any changes going on, um, other than very minor changes inside. I don't know if there's, there's any questions or, or issues on that. Adjacent properties are protected from nuisance, uh, nuisances caused by noise, fumes, glare, lights, and from detracting visual features. Um, the neighbor is here tonight, he's been, um, gracious enough to come out, if you have any questions, that type of thing. Um, and I think that that's, um, adequately addressed. Uh, unique man-made features, and it talks about preserving the features that are there. And since there are no changes in the features that we're making here, I, I, I don't see that a, as an issue. Adequate parking, loading, uh, facilities, et cetera. I think there's adequate parking, I don't know if there's any concerns on your part as far as parking is concerned. Um, to maintain the village-like character, it's a building that's existed, and it was part of the village, so the character, unless maybe the character of, of Georgetown is changing or else. Um, water resources are protected from depletion and contamination. Um, I don't see that as an issue, if it's an issue, I, I just need to know, and, and we'll try to address it certainly. And those are the criteria that we're looking at, and so on that basis, if you have any questions or...
Okay, uh, Tim, start with you.
No, you can end with me.
All right.
Oh, you've got so much, I'd let you go first.
I'm the chair, so I'd like to...
Concede. Go far, because you'll probably incorporate everything that I would've said anyway.
All right. Um, so you, you, you did comment on the legend, I, I, I agree, that needs to be, uh, looked at. I think before I get into the detailed comments, what I, what I did just wanna comment on is that when I looked at these plan, uh, the, the new submittal versus the old submittal, um, in gen- and, and it's, there's been two months in between, um, which is a lot of time. I, I've seen maybe fifteen percent, and I'm just guessing at that, out of a hundred percent of what we talked about actually being shown on these plans. So there's an awful lot of information that's not on these plans, and I understand you have these exhibits that you have submitted tonight. Um, but we haven't seen them, so they're gonna be, we're not gonna be able to, or I'm only speaking for myself, I'm not gonna be able to act on that until I get to see it, uh, translate it somehow. And I agree with you totally, it's funny, you, you read the, um, approval requirements, 'cause I had made a note to myself that, um, you know, the job of the planning board is basically to protect the health, safety, welfare of, of the town and enforce the ordinance as written. And, um, I think the ordinance is, is pretty clear in terms of what we've asked for, um, that's not on the plan. Um, so what I wanna do is, that, that was just sort of a, a backdrop of, um, uh, you know, I, I, and I appreciate your concerns about trying to save money for the client. Um, but I think, and this is just my opinion, I think it's, it's the cost of doing business, um, for site plan approval. Um, I don't think any of the requirements or requests that are being talked about are onerous. I, I think it's just what the ordinance says we are supposed to do as a planning board, so. Um, with that as sort of a backdrop, I just, I guess, I'm gonna start at the waivers only 'cause they're at my lower right-hand side, but, um, number one, location of all wetlands and buffer zones, and of flood plains, looking for a waiver on that. Um, I would only support that kind of a waiver if there was, um, some assurance that there was no that this project wasn't involved in any jurisdictional setbacks. You know, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean there has to be a wetland on site, and, but if, as long as there, this note is attested, attesting to that, that this project doesn't impact the setbacks associated with wetland jurisdiction, I as one member would be okay with that.
So if I were gonna go to the Conservation Commission, and I would ask them for a determination, or, or would it be?
No, that, that would be, that would be up to...
Engineer?
That would be up to your, that would be, well, that would be up to your engineer, depending on his qualifications, to visually assess it. But he won't be able to, uh, determine that, for you'd be a wetland scientist that would, um, what, I guess, see, I, I, this is where I'm getting into trying to help you do the job. What, what, what I would do if I were you is I'd first go to Conservation, sit down with Steve and say, Steve, are there any wetlands that you're aware of, any issues around this property? He may say there's absolutely zero. Can, can the board hang their hat on that, um, you know?
I'd be okay with an email from Steve to Howard.
Or something like that, okay.
And, and just as a note, when, when this was filed, all the town departments received a copy of it, we didn't receive any comments back from ConCon, so it's nearly done, it, it's just a formal email or something?
Yeah.
Then that would be fine.
Okay, so it's just something like that to take, to address that issue.
Can I address that a little bit?
Um, on, on the wetlands?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, what did your, the building inspector, uh, determine? What did he say about that?
Uh, he didn't say anything about it that I, that I, I'm aware of.
That should've been a building inspector's decision, because the water resource is based on elevations.
Well...
In our bylaw.
And, and water resources is also a zoning board, isn't it?
Yes.
And, and so when the zoning board took this matter up, at that time, it should've been addressed with the zoning board, if it was in fact applicable with the Water Resources District. And it wasn't, so.
I'd go back to him.
So if the, if the zoning board made a determination that, or a de facto determination that there wasn't an issue, now you wanna see that there's another, from, from another, you, you want it from another source?
The building inspector, uh, gives the zoning board directions. And with the denial, what did it say on the denial? When you went for, uh, permit, occupancy permit?
At this point, honestly, I forget, I don't have a copy of it.
Gary, if, if your letter of denial stated your application to the zoning board was required?
Yeah.
The building inspector would've stated in that, that it's in the Water Resources District, and you'd have to make application to the zoning board.
What it did is it, it, it said that, um, it, the building inspector said that we had to go to the ZBA for a, uh, special permit and back to you for a site plan review. Um, and then that was changed to a, um, for a variance, and then back to you for a site plan review. So when we, so that is what the building inspector gave us. It wasn't a, a determination that I know of.
Well, why did you request a waiver? I'm a little confused. If you're requesting a waiver on the water resource, why did you do that?
Because it's listed, um, I believe it's listed on the contents of the plan, and you're...
He's not requesting a waiver from the water resources.
Did you read that just now?
Wetlands.
Wetlands.
He's requesting a waiver from the wetlands.
Well, how did the water resource?
Location of all wetlands and buffer zones, and of all flood plains shown on plan, no wetlands on site. They're requesting a waiver from that, and that's, so the discussion...
So we have a stamp from the engineer that says that there's no wetlands on site. I guess that doesn't take care of setbacks from the butters.
It's just, it's just making sure that there's no wetland, and I don't, there probably isn't, but that there's no ma- significant wetland of importance that's sitting adjacent, close to the property, that the setbacks you're encroaching upon. That you're within their setbacks of jurisdiction, that you can or can't do things.
And, and that email from the agent for the Conservation Commission would support their waiver request.
That's all we'll look at, that's, that's correct.
That's right.
Um, number four, um, existing and proposed topography. We need, again, from some professional, just to verify, um, who's qualified to determine that there are no, um, drainage issues, no grading issues. Um, the only way I know how to do that is to get contour information. However, if, and this is just me, if, and I, this is trying to, this is trying to work with the applicant to save money. Um, if, if, if you have a civil engineer who's willing to stamp a, a drawing and a note that says something to the effect of, um, there are no, there are no, uh, there are no drainage issues. I'm not sure how you wanna word it, but if a civil in his stamp wants to take that on in just some words versus going out and getting topography.
But they're not changing anything.
But this is, that's true, that's true, but this is that...
That would be more relevant if they were.
Well, I, no, it, 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 it's kind of, um, this is a site plan approval, and it opens up the checklist that we have to go through. And one of the things we are responsible for are, is stormwater, obviously. And I can't sit here and say there are no problems. And I'm not saying that there are problems, and I understand the applicant doesn't think there are problems, and I'm not saying he's wrong. But as a board, we can't just on the applicant's verbal, there are no problems, hang our hat.
But he's not adding any pavement or anything, is he?
But I don't know if the existing site has problems. I, it may not.
This is the first site plan review of the property. And it may even have been, Tim, as an example to think about, is maybe there's another property in town that had a site plan review done fifteen years ago, and modifications were done through different permits over those fifteen years, and then there's a new site plan that comes in. Would you be able to trust that those modifications haven't created any adverse conditions? That's all.
But they're not making any modifications.
With, with this, correct, but...
It's a change of use.
It's just a change of use.
But it triggers the site, so that's the first step, they're not making changes, that's correct, but they, uh, they have to apply for site plan approval, which then triggers the next, which is this requirement that we have to verify, and this is the only...
But if there was a drainage issue, they're not exacerbating it, they're not making it worse.
No, but if there is a drainage issue, then does the board wanna go ahead and approve that? I wouldn't as one board member just automatically say, sure, you can take over a new building and you've triggered site plan approval, and our job is to protect the town, and there's a drainage problem, and you can go ahead with the drainage problem, that wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't be comfortable doing it.
Drainage as far as if it were flowing onto somebody else's property could be an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
But their neighbors uphill.
Well, I don't know.
And surrounded by roadway.
I don't know if there are drainage problems, Tim, I, I can't answer the question.
I've just never heard, we, I've never heard that we've asked anyone.
Can I just get a clarification on something? Essentially, the waiver is a request to show the existing and proposed topography contour lines on the plan.
Correct, correct.
And, and it's been raining for the last two days, I mean, I, I can, I think I could drive by there tonight. It's not a huge parcel, I mean, I can drive by there tonight, and if I see, uh, extensive puddles, then maybe I'd, I'd be, uh, convinced to have them show us the contours, but...
Yeah, it's expensive to do contours.
Yeah, it's...
No, it's not, well, no, it's not. I mean, it all depends on what you think is expensive, but, um, it's probably for such a small site, and you have clear shot on, from two station points, it's probably two hours of someone's time in the field and another couple hours of drafting. It's just not a lot of time, it's not a lot of effort.
If, if anything, they would be the recipient of water, because they're lower. This whole street goes up, this is up.
I just...
They're on the bottom.
So I wanna go back to your, you know, that you could go out there. I think it's, I think it's a real slippery slope for planning board members to say that they will go out and review something, and they will say that it is okay by their, I, I think that's just a real slippery slope. I, I think, where do you draw the line then, for all the, for other things, for lighting, for, um, whatever other element is required for planning board approval, site plan approval?
With my eyes.
Yeah, but who, who is the qual- who, are you qualified to do that though, Harry?
I'll know if I'm standing in a puddle.
Yeah, but are you qualified to tell what that was like during that storm? You know, where the water's going, and, and if it's too much for a catch basin, if the basins are functioning properly? Uh, I, I, maybe you think, okay, so you might think you are, I would not hang my hat on anyone but a civil engineer's stamp. That's why we have stamps to do this stuff, and so...
It's only gonna be a couple hours, I don't see any infection to do it.
Wouldn't be saying that the drainage was working or functioning properly. The civil engineer would only be saying, this elevation is ninety-two point one seven, the next one a foot away is ninety-two point one eight. That's all the civil engineer would be saying.
Well, for this waiver, I'm, I'm a... This isn't even the civil engineer, this waiver is talking about just the contours, existing and proposed. So that's the land survey.
And there's no difference.
And that...
To my knowledge.
No difference of what?
Between existing and proposed.
Right, so you'd basically be getting existing contours throughout the whole site. It's only with that data in hand can a civil engineer or any other professional landscape architect take those drawings and determine if the site has drainage issues. That's how they do it, they don't do it by, I mean, a visual inspection is part of it, but in the end, it's the survey. Now, I'm going back to trying to work out a solution so you don't have to get these. This is where this nickel and diming is really, um, it, it's a real challenge, 'cause it ends up... It, well, it ends up, I, I agree with you, Tilly, but it ends up costing everybody more time and more effort than just doing it once the right way from the get-go. With that said...
Well, it's, it's very, it's very difficult when you go to any board, and it says, here are three hundred and twenty-five rules. But you can ask for a waiver for any of the first two hundred. And what you do at that point is you try to get a conversation going, um, with the town as to what would you like, what would you do, and you go back and you try to do it, and you try to come back. And, and everything has a balance, and, and other words, you know, there are, I, I, in, in the law, I see off-time people make a mistake, and that they, in interpreting rules, they, they make everything a black line, it's not, you have to understand the intent and what it's trying to accomplish. And you have to use, what judges have told me is just we're gonna use a little common sense, and this is, this is, you know, th- this is, this is okay. I, we will do whatever you wanna, wanna do, and, and we'll go to the highest criteria. I am trying to save money, and I'm trying to save time, and I'm looking at, at, we, you know, we came into an existing building um, and said, okay, we're not gonna make any changes if we don't have to, because it gets very onerous, extremely onerous. And, and, you know, I, I, to get an engineer, I, I'm gonna go up to an engineer, and I'm gonna say, can I have a statement that there are no drainage issues on this? And he's gonna say, well, I'm not gonna give you that. He's gonna say, based upon the following things and the following items, it follows that, and in my opinion, at this time, based upon those things. And then he may wanna say, I've worked with a lot of LSPs and environmental issues. And what they do is they go out, and they look at a piece of property, and they say, hey, there's a dump, there's, there used to be a dump site out there. I need to investigate that more. Or what they do is they go out and they eyeball it, and they look at it, and they say, this is a residential lot, it's been sitting here and empty for the past fifty years. I can reasonably say that as an LSP, that I don't have to do any other further investigations. I, it, it's...
You're, you're, you're making, you, you made my case, actually, I think, very well, um, when, when you said, you know, that this, the engineer is not gonna give you that stamp and that statement without those qualifications. Because he's also going to say, look, I need to, I need the topography, that's like basic step one. And so, you know, on the one hand, I'm trying to, and then I'm just speaking for myself, I'm trying to compromise and come up with a, with a solution. I don't know how you get a solution other than to turn and not address the issue. Um, you, 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 you can get an engineer who you know who's comfortable doing that. Sometimes there are some engineers that are so confident in their skills that they would do that. I personally would never do that for a client, but some engineers might, you know? Um, so, but some engineers might, um, and, and that's not a good thing or a bad thing, it's just, uh, to do it, the most efficient, quick, fast, least cost effec- uh, cost-effective way is to get topography and put the issue to bed. Otherwise, um, you can try to get a civil stamp, but I'm not gonna, um, accept, I'm just one member, I'm not gonna accept that waiver. And I'm just one member.
Okay, so it's asking for, but it is asking for a waiver on the site plan, and, and I was, I guess I was hoping that we'd be able to just look at the lot and see what we can see, and it's, as a planning board, you are qualified to look at it, you're making judgments based upon what's going on here, and, and...
I would disagree, as a planning board, we are, we are not really qualified to, um, do surveying, to do, um, engineering of that. But, but the determination of there's a drainage problem or not, I would argue, that's a professional's job.
Okay, well, the determination of whether this should be on the map or not, you're saying, um, you need a statement from an engineer...
A civil engineer, yeah? That would say, that would just, that would address that issue.
And, and would a land surveyor be okay on that?
No, 'cause they're not, they're not professionally qualified for stormwater.
What issue? Because the waiver is requesting that... What issue, because the waiver is requesting that lines. Be shown on a plant, it's not saying anything beyond those lines being shown.
That's correct. That's correct.
From that, we can derive if there are drainage issues.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what, so Howard's, so I'm not sure he asked us.
Being shown on the plan or not, it's the waiver being requested, I believe, I believe.
What 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 the rule says is the contents of the site plan shall contain the following items. So there's a, there's a request for a waiver of those items to be on the plan. And the basis for asking for that is that um it's an existing lot, it's flat. Um you can see the whole thing, there are no trees hiding anything.
Understand.
There's, there's nothing going on that 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 you can't see, looking at that balance, everything has to have a balance. Um when I take my car into, you know, get something done, if it has a flat, they can see it and they can, they can fix it, they they don't have to.
Yeah.
You know, test it.
Yeah, I mean, it it makes sense to ask for the waiver, I mean, I I understand why you would, I'm giving you the reasons why I wouldn't support that waiver.
The the downtown area is very critical, uh you said you lived here in Georgetown.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, it's a very sensitive area. We have many plans uh that we tried a couple of years or three, four years back. What they called was a W uh WR, was it?
Forty R.
And we were trying to revitalize the downtown with additional mixed uses with apartments on the top. How's it, couldn't do it without getting a treatment plant or a connection. At the time, we were considering the schools accepting. But it was e- extensive, I think the Board of Health is restrictive on how much water goes in. The area with their, you know, uses of restaurants and coffee shops, whatever. Limit it right now.
I used to live right downtown and I know what gives the downtown life. And what gives the downtown life is a mixture of residential and commercial.
But you can't live in in the, in a, in a swamp.
You can't live, live in a swamp, but you can't condemn the property either.
Walk around in it.
I'd agree with you in terms of showing contour lines. Um I rarely see plans come in here that don't have contour lines. I don't particularly think they're needed, but if you want them, but then to have a civil engineer then state that. It's not an issue, I mean.
Well, I'm willing, I'm willing to do this, I'm willing to, once I get topography and can look at the topography myself. If I see a glaring issue, then I will flag it. And I'm willing to do that, I'm not willing though to take responsibility for the final sign-off saying that this. Plan has no drainage issues. Part of our job as this, as the board with this project is to make sure there are no drainage issues, I know everybody believes there aren't, I'm not suggesting there are. But we need someone who's professional qualified to make that determination, that's what we base our decisions on. So. You know, I, step one is to get the topography and step two is to not engage an engineer yet. You know, although, no, I take that back, you're gonna, eventually you're gonna need to get the professional to to say that it's fine. I don't know how else to do it. Let me go on to number five, we can, so number four, there's there's discussion on the board about number four. We can come back to these, um number five, so you submitted a letter with regards to landscape. Material and sizes and so on, and I think that's great, um but I think it needs to be shown on the plan. Um the letter and where plants go and how it's described, um.
Well, they.
I'll reiterate that.
Yeah, and and it it could be.
Only needs to be shown on the.
It could be my background as an attorney, sometimes when you have a deed.
Yeah.
What you do is you say from a point A and you describe it verbally, from point A to point B. And sometimes I turn around and I I refer to a plan. And when you have a plan and you have a verbiage, the verbiage always takes precedent over the plan. Okay, and and what I'm looking at here is is I'm not looking at anything dramatic, I'm I'm looking. On the plan, I'm looking at a fence, the distance of my pen at ten dollars, uh ten. Uh feet with deciduous plantings every four feet.
Then if you want to transfer those notes onto the plan, that's fine.
But what I did is I incorporated it by reference.
What happens is the references to these plans get lost and the reality is that the only thing that people end up really having access to that are gonna build it. And make sure that it happens is this, they don't carry the eight and a half by eleven plan documents, deeds, whatever with them. So typically, when that happens, you transfer that by, you know, you say, you take the text of that letter.
Okay, so I can take another.
Summarize it.
Yeah, we could take the letter and I can incorporate it as a separate page on the plan.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanna note in into this discussion that the letter states.
Depending on how it's.
States plantings to be placed on the northerly side of the fence shall be deciduous planting spaced at about four feet intervals along the fence. Now, the 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 contents of the site plan. Um information on the location, size and type and number of existing proposed landscape features. Proposed plant list containing species, common name, size caliber shall be included as well.
Yeah.
So.
Now, now there is, now there is a way you can do that with a note, where you can say there will be ten. X species plant, whatever it is, um three feet high, um located X feet on center. Um eighteen inches off the face of the fence and and a note like that. Would give you all of that information, it's not the best way to do it, the best way to do it is to show the individual plants.
It's it's another way to do it, it's a format that you're familiar with and that you like.
Yeah.
It's it's it's, it's not in all disciplines, um the plan isn't always king, but it's it's uh.
It's the way I'll vote for it.
Yeah, we, that's kind of our system.
So, so there's, so there's discussion on that, um number eight, um. You at, you're asking for a waiver on the facade elevations, but you submitted them.
In in, Rob, in, this is just something to think about, the. The site plan requirement is is elevation facade treatment plans of all proposed buildings. And there aren't any buildings being proposed.
Got it.
So.
Got it.
Um their their waiver is from showing elevation and facade treatment plans of all proposed buildings. What I think would help with this waiver request as well as what's also being discussed, I'm just gonna add in here. Is there would be a better explanation of why the waiver is being requested. And for number eight, it says facade to remain the same, if it had been added in. Um no, no proposed buildings, no, no new buildings are proposed.
Yeah, yeah.
Um then perhaps that would help explain things a lot better. It it's, here's the, here's the requirement or requesting a waiver because of.
I think that that was great, I I missed that for just what you were saying, when I read it, I I didn't pick up on just the proposed, I think that's good. Um information on location, size and type of parking, loading, storage, service area, parking shown on plan as existing parking spaces and layout. Um so I, I don't know how to respond on that until I look at that ADA um exhibit that you handed out. Um but I'm also interested in, are there any dimensions to any of these parking spaces?
Um just the scale, uh that I, that I know, so the scale.
So, for example, when I quickly scaled them, they looked like they were sixteen feet in length. And does the board, now that doesn't meet the ordinance, so, so do, well, how does the board feel about something like that?
I think that if you ask to be personally, and using common sense. Today's vehicles are huge, yeah, with these vans. They block a lot and they're wide. So I would say that as mu- as large as you could make them would be a good idea.
What 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 I'm concerned about here is, I'm trying, I'm, what I'm concerned about. Well. So here's a project that has been. I'm not gonna say functioning correctly or not, I'm just gonna say functioning, cars have been in the past parking and leaving and it has worked. If the board ends up requiring that the parking spaces meet code, meet, and don't give a waiver to that. Um I think it's going to have a real detrimental effect on the current site plan. Um that they they, it may make it so onerous that they, you know, they can't do it. Um or it's gonna be a dramatic redo. Um because when you get into the parking stalls, then you get into how wide the aisle for the access, the travelway needs to be. And I don't know how the hell this thing got approved the way it did, but um it is what it is, so, you know. I I think at the very least, the board should know what the dimensions of these parking spaces are. So that then the board can make a decision whether they want to require they or not. And they meets ordinance or grant a waiver on that, but at the very least, we shouldn't be scaling the plan.
So if you just give me some guidance as to how wide that you, that you want these?
Well, that would be according to the ordinance. Um I think it's off the top of my head, I think it's nine by eighteens, but I'm not positive.
But what you're requesting is just that the dimensions of the existing parking be laid out on the plan.
For now.
Right.
But what I, if I can help it, what I'd like to get is 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 feedback, and and I know it's difficult to do, it's difficult, the process is difficult, but. If if I have feedback or if I have feedback through you, through Howard, as to what you like and what you don't like, then I can, I can. You know, make make it happen as much as possible.
We like nine by eighteen.
It's not like, it's not what we like or don't like, it's the ordinance.
But the ordinance has certain latitude to it.
Which would be the waiver in this regard.
Right, correct.
So it's the nine by eighteens or you get the waiver?
Eighty-seven, um um I I I think we we should go over that step. And just bypass the step of showing the line, the 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 dimensions.
Okay.
And just cut right to the chase and if I were to know that these were not the right size. I I, I as one member of the board would think, to save time. You should just show these as meeting the ordinance. And how you would make them all show and meet the ordinance. Paint lines basically, and maybe some reconfiguration, maybe it was one.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a simple straightforward answer and I, and and and, and we can live with that because we know what what to do, it's very difficult. It's very difficult to to um. Uh the the process is a communication, communication is is back and forth, back and forth.
I I as one member would would hope that you would show the uh the required.
Two.
Depths and widths.
So basically, what how, um what Harry's saying is that the ordinance will tell you what the width and the length of these spaces needs to be. And associated with that, it's all part of the exact same section in the ordinance, it will tell you the aisles, the travel widths. That get you into the parking spaces, those, that what they need to be. Um and you, uh. So that that's, that's what, that's what the ordinance would would do, tell you on that, um. So that was uh nine on the parking, um. Ten zoning setback distances, you say shown on the plan, so then I'm wondering why you're asking a waiver on it?
Um if you want them in there, we'll put them in.
No, but you say you're showing them on the plan.
Zoning setback distances shown on.
So, so the note is just, is confusing me.
It wa- it is confusing because what he's showing is the distance of the building to the property line, but he's not showing. Basically, the setbacks are. The setbacks are.
Okay. So then that would be zoning setback distances, so there wouldn't be a period after s- distances. You're asking for a waiver on that. And that's just, that's a very easy thing to do. Um sometimes, sometimes all we do, we'll put it, you know, a zoning summary chart and it'll say zoning setbacks. Front, rear, side, fifty fifty, a hundred, uh done. Um fire lane waiver pre-existing, so you'll get us that email or whatever that.
I'm sorry, I I thought that the uh the letter had been sent out before to to the board, but I had spoken with the fire chief.
Okay.
Um uh under a different subject and we talked specifically about this, to understand state changes of the fire lane widths. And he said that in this instance, he wouldn't be fighting the fire in in a way that would require a fire lane around the building, so.
Would you kindly ask him to just send you an email that says, you know, from his fire perspective, this guy is also.
Yeah, I thought I had sent the board a letter, a review letter before, and so I apologize for that.
Okay, 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 so that that that's still to come. Um limit of work delineation will be done on interior of building and on the dumpster and fence. Um but I don't think that takes into account where plantings would take place, unless I'm missing something there.
So I'll add in, and plantings.
I think that's the only thing that is missing for the limit of work.
Well, the the the, I I'm just offering it up, that that the limit of work delineation would be the, basically the property line.
Correct, and so in that case, all you would put is a note on the drawing. These would be one of your general notes, limit of work is the property line and it's covered.
Another note on here that says limit of work.
In your gen- in your general notes there, yeah.
Is property line, but that's not exactly true.
Wouldn't need a waiver from.
Oh, but it's not, cause you're not working, cause you're working off your property in some.
We're working off the property, correct.
Right, so that's not the work.
Not the, right, so it will.
Were you working off of the property?
That's what you need.
It's sixty-eight, um uh sixty-eight West Main Street.
To put the fence in.
I I guess I missed the letter, I I didn't read the letter, so.
No, it it's it's um, um but.
So the fence is being proposed to not be placed on.
The ZBA has the, that we talked about, um. What what I did, it's it's been my experience, one of my my last subdivisions I did. I watched a neighbor, um who was an obstructionist extraordinaire. And everything that happened, just, they just kept on asking and asking and it cost thousands and thousands of dollars to delay the subdivision. And to get everything done, so, you know, towards that end, um the lesson is, is that you talk to the neighbors and you try to. Make things work. And towards that end, I'm looking at the property, um we didn't see an issue, but we tried to work with the neighbors to come up with something that's more than. Reasonable, that addresses any issues that they may have. And one of them is to put a fence on their property, which is, which is a lot more practical than putting a fence, um. Down low because sound travels and this would give them more protection than 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 um a fence someplace on the locus. So if if it's a better solution, is 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 what I was looking at, was to put it at sixty-eight West Main Street. Rather than um seventy West Main Street, to get the same effect, uh. To get the same effect, I would have to put up maybe a, a, you know, ten-foot, fifteen, or twelve-foot, or thirteen-foot fence on seventy. Um West Main Street, which is gonna be maybe an eyesore. Um it was just more effective, it seemed more reasonable, it seemed uh um to address the issues at hand and and uh that's why we did it.
Will there be an easement granted?
An easement, yeah. You didn't do an easement.
So who, so who will, so if there's a problem with the fence, um. And it breaks down or something, who's responsible for fixing it?
That'd be the owners at sixty-eight.
And what right would they have if the house was sold?
Excuse me?
What right would they have to do so if the house were to be sold?
It would be their fence.
To do on as someone else's property?
No, if if the house is sold.
Yeah.
And the fence is on their property.
Right.
And it'd be, it's a next to the property, it becomes their property, and so they have the right to go in and fix the fence.
What if they don't?
And what if they tear the fence down?
If they turn the fence down, then what it, what it says is that they don't see the fence as really. Doing any, any good to anybody.
Right, but then the special permit they granted.
Site plan.
The site plan, but no, the special permit from the, from the ZBA is in violation.
It's a violation.
And forgive me, but it's one of the eight conditions, so wouldn't that void it? And make this, the, the special permit null and void?
Let me read the zoning board of, uh, appeals decision.
Yeah, I have written it.
Yeah, could, could you read the section on, on the fence?
Yeah, the.
I think it's number two.
It's actually one into. The applicant shall construct a sound barrier slash fence on the ninety-eight West Main Street side of the property.
Okay, that can be done.
And the applicant shall in number two, the applicant shall install reasonable screening on the seventy West Main Street side of the fence.
Correct, and that can be done.
To reduce noise installed near the property line.
And that can be done. And both of them can be done.
Your question was what happens if the.
Why is it going on the other property? I'm not getting that.
Because it is the best decision under these circumstances.
So all, and, and, and bear with me for a sec, so. I think everybody is assuming that it is the right decision, the best decision, the most effective decision, what you folks, works best for you. But I think what Harry's getting at is that then the responsibility to keep that in place per the ZBA special permit.
For whose benefit?
But tha- that's not how it's, that's not how the ZBA permit is written, I mean, it just is what it is.
The ZBA permit says that we need to build a fence, and we can do that, and it says that we need to put in the, the, um.
Reasonable screening on the other side.
Reasonable screen on the other side, and as per the agreement that's attached as exhibit A.
Excuse me?
There's an exhibit A.
I failed to see that, but.
Uh, it was in the, uh.
In the decision.
It's, it's attached, it's, it's attached here, it's, it's the best decision, and it, it, it is the best decision to put the, the fence on the other property. And why isn't that a good decision?
I don't think people, I don't think people are questioning, again, I'll repeat that, I don't think people are questioning that it's not the right place to put the fence.
Okay.
I think what people are questioning is, there's no control then, there's no mechanism in place that allows for that fence to remain. In the proper state and proper condition, um, because it's, you have no easement to take care of it, you have no access to take care of it.
Correct.
And that's the issue.
But there's also a natural, in other words, if, if, if Michael puts up, if we put a fence up on Michael's property. And that's what he wanted.
Michael's property.
Um, the neighbor.
If sixty-eight.
Yeah.
With, with something like this to try to make this work, what if, what if the abutter, um, uh, wrote a letter for the record for the files? That, um, was referenced on the plan for, you know, that, that the abutter agrees to the fence here, and will take care of it, and da, 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 da.
And, well, I, I, I wanna maybe say, wha- wi- with that, is, is something that Harry said before. Is, and everyone's agreeing that the best location for the fence is up on the hill, uh. And, and Gary, the, answer the, maybe you can answer the question. To satisfy the planning board and the zoning board, the fence is gonna be installed.
Correct.
The most ideal location is on the other property.
Correct.
And everything is good.
It's the right decision, yes.
So what happens when the house is sold and new people move in, and they remove the fence?
But if they.
They're in violation of the zoning board decision.
No, but the vi- but the zoning board va- uh, decision says is that you shall construct a fence, doesn't say it has to stay there forever, does it?
My, my concern is more that if this, if this dwelling at sixty-eight were to be sold. Tomorrow, or the day after that fence was installed.
Yeah.
That owner, that new owner, would have absolutely no idea that there was some kind of an obligation.
Oh, my lord.
Well, but there'd be some kind of an obligation to maintain that fence.
But there's got to be some sort of compromise here, this is, this is the right decision, it, it is so, it is so right, it makes my head spin.
And I, I'm tending to agree with you, but I believe that what we need.
And it is the best thing for Georgetown.
Is an easement, I, I understand that this gentleman is willing to give up some of his property rights to have that fence there. And I understand that, that's his decision, he owns the parcel, free and clear. But my concern is any future owner of sixty-eight West Main Street goes into that with eyes open. And they see an easement on the deed, that's my, my take.
But the whole purpose of the fence is for the benefit of that neighbor.
Absolutely.
And if someone down the road buys the house. And lives there for three years, the fence needs work, and he says, I'm just gonna take it down. What's the problem with that?
The problem is the ZBA.
Was to, to his benefit, to that, that property owner's benefit.
I can't read the mind, I can't read the mind of the ZBA, I only know that that was a condition.
And that's their jurisdiction, it's not the side approval. It's not, it's not the side approval process, what you're referring to is that there should have been another condition on here. And I agree with what you're saying, but that's not our purview for a side approval. All we wanna do is have, put the fence on the map, this is the map, this is the plan, that's what we want.
Well, we want it.
The zoning board will have to answer to future problems, as well as the building inspector.
I have an issue with showing something on a plan. That is on a property that is not the subject of the plan.
Well, you do it with wetlands all the time, you, you just asked me to show, I, I, I go before boards all the time, and they say, show me the wetlands off the property. I've gotta do it, I do it all the time.
Gary, what you submitted to the board tonight, is there anything in here from the abutting property owner about the fence?
No, no.
So who, what?
So the board will wanna see that.
Well, definitely will want something in writing that says it's okay to be doing this from the, from the abutter.
Yeah, that would be a good decision.
That doesn't apply to me.
No, no, but I'm at the very, but at the very least.
At the very, yeah, that's, that's.
But we can't condition the side approval, we have to follow what's there, or we, or approve a waiver. We can't create right now, it's our, I, that's how I understand it. That should have been the special, the zoning board's, uh, jurisdiction.
I don't, I, I.
Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
And this is, and this is also presupposing that, that, you know, there is an embankment on, on his property, that, that protects him from sound anyways. In other words, this is frosting on the cake, it is, it is something that is nice to do, I don't think it's something that substantively is impacting here. And I, frankly, I can't afford to get a sound engineer to sit there and say, if you have a five foot embankment, and the noise is coming up from here and this, and, you know, it, it just. It's, I, I'm trying to.
This is, this is, this is one of the challenges and slash problems with any time a project is doing work on someone else's property. This is the, this is the, this is the problem, and, um.
It's, it's one of the reasons that, that, that businesses and, and, and people are, are gonna be reluctant to, to, to. To go into, to projects, I, I agree, when you go to an existing building, every builder I know says, I'm not interested. And I'll rehab, wipe it out, let's start fresh, I, I'm not interested in that, why? Because it's too many problems, and, and. So as a result, um, you know, anything we can do to get you what you need, we will do. Um, if I can ascertain what it is, and I, I'll go back and I'll go over the list, and, and I'll say, I want this, this, and this on the, on the map, and that's what we'll try to do.
So with regards to that item, um, just having a letter for the record from the abutter. Saying we, 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 we agree with putting the fence on our property and giving you the right to do the work on the property. But with regards to Harry's concern, which I think is a legitimate one, um, how, wha-. What's to make sure that the, uh, order of conditions, or that what the ZBA, the special permit that they've granted? What's to ensure that, um, whether this owner doesn't take care of the fence and it falls down in ten years? And doesn't put it back up, or the owner sells the property, someone moves in and takes the fence down immediately? In both cases, the property then is in violation of the special permit, what do we do to fix that, or am I?
Right, just to, in with that, reread the, the, the ZBA. The applicant shall construct a sound barrier slash fence on the sixty-eight West Main Street side of the property. And, and, and getting to what you're talking about, Rob, there's an interpretation from the planning board, interpretation from the applicant. One saying just to construct it, and the planning board is considering it as, construct means it's gonna stay, and if it falls and disrepair. It needs to be repaired, so. There is, I just, in bringing this up to, uh, allow some recognition of, of clarity in, in the actual wording of, of the decision. And the, the planning board not wanting to do something with the site plan that would conflict with the zoning board decision.
Is it possible to put this letter on, on the sixty-eighth deed? Let him register that letter, can that be a, you're an attorney, can that be something?
Well, you can, you can put almost anything you want on record, but with, the, the difference that you're talking about is a license and an easement. And what you're talking about is a maintenance easement on the, on the fence in perpetuity. And what I'm talking about is, this is a certain amount of practicality here, that it is in the owner of sixty-eight West Main Street's own interest. To ke- if they like that fence, if it is, it is, it is. Serving a purpose here for, for sixty-eight West Main Street to, to keep that fence, and they can keep it forever. But if it's not doing any good, and there are, and there is no noise that's bothering them, and they decide to take this house and turn it into a, um. Um, a commercial property, I don't know, and they say, geez, you know, it's no problem, I wanna take that fence down because nothing is bothering me here, that should be their right too.
So in the spirit of trying to move this along, and also trying to come up with a solution with this particular problem. What if, um, we ask town council's opinion of, um. If we approve the plan, um, as proposed, where there is no maintenance easement, there is no way for the. For, for seventy West Main Street to take care of this fence. And someone takes it down. Is that a violation of the special permit? Because if it is, then we have to address it.
If, if I may, I, I think that independent of the ZBA decision, I think the site planning review. Process and the planning board is making their independent decision as to whether, for instance, and I'm just making up this fact, it, it, I'm not proposing. If there was absolutely no difference in sound, none, with the fence or without the fence. Then the site plan review process could say, we don't need the fence, the ZBA may require it, but we don't need it.
But they, in this case, under this, in this particular situation, for better or for worse, right or wrong, the ZBA got very specific in their requirements as to this issue of the fence.
And it's because of something that we brought up in the context of the ZBA meeting.
Whether it is or isn't, whether, whether, and that, so it's very, it's written very specific in the ZBA special permit. And so I just, I just wanna make sure that, that, that we're not creating a situation that down the future, um, could be a, a, a violation of that permit. And maybe part of the question is asking town council, but I hate to pass on the buck, but, you know, is this even planning board's purview, or should this be ZBA purview?
In, in the least, the planning board needs to get a letter from the butter.
At least.
Because it, it, I think the biggest concern is that if this fence comes down, there's damage, there, there might be a question about ownership of it, and responsibility of maintenance and anything else, so.
Who's responsible to maintain it?
If it falls down, it's the house.
That's the question.
It doesn't say anything.
What if damages the house? Who's responsible? Just the idea of moving along too, Rob, it, it.
Their fault.
Yeah.
Move on to some other items and, and just leave it at the letter.
We have, um, okay, so we're gonna move on, and we're gonna leave it at the letter, and at the very least, it's something to the attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, and then.
What, what would be the issue before the attorney, cause I can write up a memo also?
Um, the issue is to, uh.
Planning board approves a plan, uh, without a maintenance agreement for the fence, if the fence is removed. Is there any violation of, uh, the zoning board's special permit, or the planning board's approval of the site plan?
Of the planning board's special permit?
Of the planning board's site plan.
Oh, site plan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would send him this decision as well.
Yeah.
That would be, you know.
We can, we can talk about it.
Number three, whatever.
Okay, so, alright, so that, um. Where, uh, where were we? Um, okay, maximum number of.
Setback distances, fire lane?
Um, fire lane waiver preexisting, so, okay.
Maximum number of employees.
Limited, maximum number of employ- only work to be done, that was it, maximum number of employees, um. I'm just curious, why would you, why wouldn't you just put the number?
Well, you don't know how many employees you're gonna have, you may have fifteen part-time employees coming in for two hours apart, uh, uh. It's not really an appropriate question, I think, in this.
Well, it's.
It's used to drive parking.
Well, it is, and that's why it is appropriate.
So you need to have it so that we can count all those spots and say, oh.
So if, if, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'll make it very quick and we'll move on, but just playing the devil's advocate. I, I have, there's thirty-five employees, they all work two hours apiece, they're all part-time, they're all Georgetown residents, they walk. Matter of fact, um, I know at least one or two employees, they'll walk to work every day.
That's great.
And that's great, and those are local residents that, that walk to work.
So if that was written down and on here?
So if I put down thirty-five employees, that would be okay?
They will walk to work. Well, no, but I mean, that's the point of it.
Well, if, the point is, is I don't know how many hours, how many shifts, I, I, I hate to limit.
How many people?
I don't know.
He's just throwing you out a number, right?
I'm throwing out a number because I don't know.
If you don't know, then we don't know how many parking spaces you need, and I can't grant an appro- I can't vote for an approval for this. If I don't know how many parking spaces are required to, to have all those employees that you're gonna have, then I can't vote for this, for the approval of this plan. Do you see my dilemma?
I see.
Help me.
I see that you can, you have the ability.
Your plan.
I, I'll put a number, it's gonna be arbitrary, and, um, I'll put a number down, I.
It, what, what may be helpful, eh, Gary, it, it goes back to what I had mentioned before. If you submitted just a letter outlining the waivers requested and the reason for the request, that would be a perfect, I think, explanation to the board. Currently, the Ridgedale operates as this, these number of employees will request a waiver from the maximum number because of this.
Okay, is there a maximum number of employees in, in town?
No, but, but the, the waivers requesting from noting the maximum number of employees.
I, I agree, Howard, I think that would answer, that would take care of that, cause then that does give us the number, you know, so.
And, and you're a little, to clear that up, it would be, it didn't matter if you had six people in a day, we wanna know how many people are gonna be in that building.
On-site at any given time.
That's all, that's the number.
So if, if somebody comes in to do inventory, sometimes they come in, if you've ever seen them in the grocery stores, they send twelve people in. They come in, they do inventory, and they leave. I, I, it's, it's.
Don't get down to that nitty-gritty.
They're gonna walk, we'll be in violation, we'll be in violation, we'll be in violation.
They're asking, how many people is gonna be paid over, something like that?
Yeah, who's, no, who's gonna be in the building working?
Eh, 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 if you explain your current operations, we, we have five full-time, four part-time. This is how they commute, I think it will better support your waiver request.
Okay, thank you, Harry.
Yeah.
Um, site distance, waiver, no change to existing site configurations, um, is everybody comfortable with the site distance out there?
Yeah.
Location of utilities, that one's fine, um, existing proposed contour elevations, number sixteen, that's a repeat, so I just delete sixteen. Cause you've already asked for that waiver up above, unless I'm missing something.
You know, the zoning and compliance is in the general notes.
It is right there, so.
So that's a.
So the waiver's not necessary to be asked for. As far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, they have required in existing.
Zoning, zoning setback distance is shown on plan.
It's all there.
It, you could argue that it's, it's right there, it says required and existing, so that's, that's it.
That's all we were asking them to do, and it's already on there.
So you can take your number ten zoning setback distance shown on plan waiver and just delete it, cause you've got the information, you don't need a waiver.
But you do have to square up where, in your notes there, where you say maximum building height, not zero, zero feet.
Yeah, that's a typo there.
Unless you're planning on putting this underground, I don't know.
Um, and then, uh, lighting?
Ten stories.
Now, so the lighting issue that was raised at the last meeting, and, um, on the elevations, you showed it on the building, those are those, um. Downlights that are along the existing building, are there any? Downlights that are along the existing building. Are there any floodlights?
There are, I'm trying to remember, along the front, there are the tubes underneath the the lip. Over the the candle Libra that comes out. Um, and I think there are a couple of floodlights on the ends of the building, correct?
So here's, here's what, here's what, um, so we have a lighting ordinance that does not allow for floodlights. And um, probably gonna wanna check that out.
Can I be grandfathered in at all?
No, cause this is a site plan approval. This is a new, this is a site plan approval. Even though it's existing, it's a new site plan approval. So it's either the board grants you a waiver on the existing lighting, which if it has those floodlights, that's what we would be allowing. And I, as one member, cannot allow that, um, when we don't allow anyone else to do that now especially.
So there, so as a rule, there'd be no floodlights in the town of Georgetown?
All all I would say is, you know, look at the lighting ordinance and just follow the lighting ordinance. Or then what you're not following, spell out, that's the waiver you're looking for and why. Okay. Um. Okay, um, just a clarification for myself in the very bottom of the plan. Where there's a note that says easement in book three sixty-nine, page eighty-one. And there's an arrow to it. This is on the plan, point four by eighty-six plan.
This is on.
This is EC one, drawing EC one.
It says easement in book page three six nine eighty-one?
See the arrow? Delete it. What's that pointing to?
The island.
The island?
Yeah.
So, but we're, okay, but where's the easement?
Oh, boy.
The easement, I I I don't know on this side of the street, on the other side of the street, what happened is the town took an easement.
Okay, that.
They took circles.
Okay, that.
When you look it up, the circles.
The town took circles, okay.
Yeah, it was part of a phase two renovation there.
Yeah.
Those.
Those sidewalks.
Those really should be typically shown on the plan versus just the note, cause you don't know where they are. And then you don't know if there's any issues with them, but they typically should be shown on the plan. And that's, um, now I haven't seen those and I don't know.
I have, they're, they're circles and.
Are they freehand circles or are they, are they freehand circles or meets and bounds?
Uh, no, they're they're drawings.
Are they easy to trans- trans?
Um, that's difficult for me to say.
Alright, so, alright, so moving on, that one's pretty low on the list of things that are important. Um, this looks like a new note where it says existing AC unit and there's an arrow pointing to the island. Is that right? Um, is there an existing unit there?
I doubt that.
No, that's that's what I'm gonna say.
Okay, so that needs to get fixed. And then you have, in the dumpster, you have a note at the very end that says location may change. And I'm, I'm okay with a note saying location may change, but if it, if you're gonna put that on it, I wanna know where it may change to. Because otherwise, what that note is saying is that you can put that really anywhere you want.
Okay.
So you could either get rid of the note, location may change, or show us where it would move to.
Di- didn't we already determine that it can't go up here because the septic's up there or something?
I think so.
So it's locked there, right?
No, I think we talked about it, but he said he was gonna see if there was any area here.
Right, but that was why we, we asked to have, show the septic.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to, you know, that's right, it should be shown.
But you're just stipulating that it can't go there because of the septic.
Right, if you look at the cleanouts and just draw lines to the vent and everything else, which you're you're looking at is, the septic system is right underneath there.
That's a pretty big area for a septic.
It's actually very small. If you go out there and look at it, it's very small.
The the chambers are small?
No, the the area is small. It's it's not a lot of space.
Typically, the, okay, whatever, um.
But you were gonna put a fence around it or something?
Well, he's got a fence for the detail, um, and typically in a detail, what the detail needs to call out are three things. Um, it's dimensioning, materials and finishes. And the, you have some of the dimensioning, where I see the eight foot high. What you need to add is the, um, uh, you need to add the size of the posts. Now, as a plan, as one planning board member, you know, if I, if if they come back.
Size of the post on on the plan?
Yeah, um, if 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 you um come back with something like three inches square, that that's not gonna work. Um, you know, so there are minimums in the industry for standards of what the square size of the post would be. Typically, it's a five by five. A lot of people for better go to six by six, things like that. Um, now, I don't know if it's wood or vinyl. I don't know, you need to call out the material.
Does the board have any preference?
Nope, it's not preference, it's, it's whatever you guys want in that regard.
And I'm not, if I put wood or vinyl?
Well, you can do wood or vinyl, but then you'd have to provide twice the information for, you know, how is this thing gonna be installed? We're gonna need to see a footing. Cause if it's vinyl, you don't just dig the post and put it directly into the ground, if it's on the top of the hill. You know, there are issues there.
Better than vinyl in itself.
But that that's up to them.
Yeah.
Um, the color slash finish, uh, so if it's, if it's gonna be wood, is it gonna be, is it gonna be cedar? Are you gonna let the cedar not weather, so you don't have to paint it, you don't have to stain it, and it'll just weather gray? That will take care of that. Um, the gate is a very important part of the fencing for dumpsters in terms of the structural hardware. So that, you know, everywhere you go, not everywhere you go, but a lot of places you go, you see after a couple of years, the fences. To the front of these dumpsters are all bent and broken and hanging down, and it's because no one ever takes care of this. So at this stage, this is when you say that the fences are gonna be this and the hardware's gonna be this, and you know structurally, it's gonna be supportive and not sagging.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Um, and you, I would think, this one's up to you guys, but I would think you'd wanna put bollards to protect the fencing. Typically, in good engineering practice, you'd wanna protect that from the actual truck that's picking it up. So you'd probably wanna locate a couple of bollards to protect your, your dumpster. Um.
Wasn't there also meant to be some type of of striping or or sign so that parking space in front of the dumpster wouldn't be?
Um. How was it gonna be, yeah, right?
Blocked during uh anticipated.
Needs to be coordinated, yeah.
Um.
I don't, I I I don't see that as a.
It was, I just recall, Gary, from a conversation at the last meeting, that there is a concern.
That was part of the conversation, you're correct, and and.
I don't recall, maybe it was resolved, I I'm just bringing it up.
No, I I I I just, it was discussed, but.
It it's a metal top.
It does look correct.
Is that on a concrete slab?
It would.
It would be on.
Let's see where that's called for, called out.
Good, good catch. Good catch. Yep. Okay. Um, on your cleanouts that you have labeled on the drawing, I'm assuming they're existing cleanouts, if you could just add the label existing. This is just wordsmithing analysis, minor stuff, and same with the septic, man. If that's existing, just label it existing, um.
We're getting on to nine thirty and we still have the uh, the old business of the.
Okay.
Decision on for the parking rack.
So that's uh, that's where we're at and I I guess to, you know, where I'm at is there's a lot of, there's information that's just been submitted tonight in those exhibits. That I'd like to take a look at, um, and there's a fair bit of information here that's been passed on that I'd like to, you know.
Yeah.
Continue the hearing based on when they think they can come back with.
Make the motion for continuation.
I'll second that.
Um, it's been.
When will it be?
Motion, when when would you be comfortable coming back with?
Um, the planning board meets on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and I believe the planning board is opening up. All the public hearings for the warrant on the fourteenth of January.
Well, you're gonna need more than the fourteenth of January, right? When you beyond that, you.
Well, what I.
You took two months to get.
It's Christmas holiday.
This, right?
Yeah, what I'd, what I'd love to do is is do exactly what I did before, is make it for the fourteenth and then I'll get to you. Um, before the end of the year as to whether we have to, if we'd like an extension on that. So that if we, if, after I talk to the architect and the land surveyor and the engineer, whoever that was gonna be. Um. You know.
You need, you need.
Why don't we just go to the twenty-eighth?
We usually do. Why don't we do three months, is that, is it, didn't we do, isn't there a policy to do an extension every three, third month?
Yeah, but but there, you filed in October, so he says, end of October, so he has till the end of January.
I I.
For for the uh, the review period.
I think, I think considering the fourteenth, which we're, you're open, we're open.
We're booked on the agenda.
I would, you need to go to the next meeting.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth, right?
So, um, so there's been a motion made and it's been seconded to continue the hearing till the twenty-eighth of January. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you have the copies of all the letters and everything that's presented?
Yes.
So, old business, would that be right, Howard?
Included in your packet, thank you.
Thank you.
I included in your packet the uh decision uh in terms of showing track changes from the planning board taking up. Um, the decision at the previous meeting. For the parking rack athletic facility, so what's in the packet shows the revisions uh that were talked about. I've received a couple of comments since, um, but they were uh minor revisions to um some words. Duplicative uh in terms of site and changing uh a few of the conditions from um. Is to over to shall. Is to, what, I'm sorry. There there was a few places in the decision where I wrote in park and rec is to. And it was requested uh that it read park and rec shall instead of using the word is to.
Sure.
Uh, Mary Ellen took a great pass at it and and corrected some of my grammatical mistakes. Um, most important addition that.
Just little on.
Um, she needed to uh two pens to redline it, so, um, but. The the biggest change was incorporation of the statement. Uh, after finding the facts, there's a statement of fact about uh adding in public comment. Uh, the fact that the the other town departments weighed in, everything, everything was in support. Um, so that was the biggest change.
I have no comments on it, I already did.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the board sign the decision.
For the special permit with conditions.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to sign the special permit for the major outdoor recreational facility. Um, as submitted. Any discussion?
I just wanna add that when you say sign the special permit, that includes the decision as well as the milers.
Thanks for the clarification.
As well as the milers, that's what I meant to say.
That's what I meant to say.
Okay.
Um.
Where is the decision completed? This is the draft, right?
Well, it's the, it's it's the final for now, if everybody's in agreement on it, right?
Didn't you?
You're looking at the minutes there, Tony.
I, well, it's just saying what, I don't have a decision, do you have?
The decisions in. It's a little further up.
Old business, this guy right here.
Okay.
Right there.
And until you sent the email wanting clarification and uh I made sure that the wording in here, I'll I'll just read it for you. Um, about the site inspecting? Engineer?
Right.
I just need to find it for a second. The site inspecting engineer shall provide site visits on as needed basis. Of erosion control and general appearance of the site throughout all phases of construction.
Okay.
So it doesn't supersede concomitant.
Okay, very, and it's all.
Okay.
Everything else was good.
Seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
One missing, okay.
Yeah, I just would also make the recommendation that the milers are here, the planning board can sign them tonight, but there's twenty-one sheets. Um, so you can, it'd be great if you just formalized it by stating that uh the planning board will sign the milers. We, I guess when I, what it is, is that you can vote to sign the milers. By having the milers in the planning office and everybody can come in when they're available to sign them, and it just doesn't have to be done right now.
I have a motion to that.
Yeah, you don't even have to do a motion.
You don't really need a formal motion.
I'm sorry, I'm just overthinking it right now.
Would make it easier.
Yeah.
So the the milers will be with the planning office, come in, stop by. Um, bring Mary Ellen a coffee and sit down and sign the milers.
Then our missing member can come in and sign the decision, the milers as well, right?
Right, cause he voted in favor of the project before.
Okay.
So here's the decision. If you, you need to sign the, there's a certificate of vote on the front and then um the decision is on the back.
Um, alright, so that's old business, uh, new business, parcel FD, Howard.
The attorney for the attorney leave subdivision. Uh, sent via email a copy of the parcel FD in draft form, I included that um in the packet. And the planning board uh should review the deed, but I would uh request that you just formalize in a vote. Uh, a recommendation that it be passed on to the. Board of Selectmen for their consideration of inclusion on annual town meeting warrant. So that the town may vote to accept uh the parcel.
That's all we're doing. Passing it along.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to um. Forward the deed to town council and the board of selectmen for uh their review.
A second.
For moving forward to town meeting.
So there's been a motion and a second to uh. Recommend um approval of the deed to the selectmen. Uh.
And recommend.
And recommend the selectmen uh uh incorporate the deed in the annual town meeting. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, okay.
I'll just note for the board that that the uh.
Good.
The deed will be reviewed by town council when they vet the whole warrant, so.
Okay.
We already jumped on that now, huh?
Yeah.
Last item on the agenda, member or public report. Um, any other concern or planning board member or member of the public? I think what I'd like to do is go to two, three first, because I think that'll take care of that. So, number two, planning board members protocol for communication. Um, basically, I think you guys were all uh in in that chain of, Harry had asked a great question about um the fire chief and the the ordinance. Fire lane whip, and all I was doing was trying to um manage the uh the the flow of information and requests of. Of town planners' time um by, and and making sure that the planning board was all together on whatever the issue was. By um, instead of having um the question go to uh.
Howard.
Town planner.
Um, my nameplate's not up tonight, so I know it can be hard.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was mine.
Sure, now that you have yours.
Yeah, I have mine. I never wanted one.
Well, that's my holder, she just took my nameplate out.
I did.
Um, that uh it 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 it's something that the information gets brought to the planning board. Um, and I think uh the state fire code issue, which is what you brought up, it leads to the next one, which is. What you could uh chat upon a little bit.
What, with the state fire code? Yeah, the um, I spoke briefly with uh the fire uh chief. And it's taking effect January first, and so we certainly have a charge now uh to look at. to look at our subdivision regulations relative to what the fire lane is gonna dimensional requirements are gonna be, to see where improvements need to be made. It doesn't have to be a public meeting and everything, the subdivision regu, uh, regulations are a document of the planning board. So that process I'll start, but the one thing that I would bring up with this, when we start looking at the fire lane whip requirement in the subdivision regs, is that the planning board has never really requested the fire lane be shown on the plan. Tonight you saw a request from it, it really ought to have a supporting document from the fire chief stating fire lane's not required for the property or something like that. It's usually, as I've seen on other site plans, delineated with a dashed line, showing this area needs to be maintained clear of obstructions. So it's just something to think about in the future.
Has that.
Right, is there a fire lane that goes all the way around the school? It didn't look like it.
No, there's a fire lane that's out front.
Yeah, I don't think the back, right-hand side, it looks like it's just grass.
They only, the chief only asked for a fire lane out front, yeah.
That's weird, I think it's the only school I've ever seen without a fire lane around.
The Dunkin' Donuts, when, when they, when, while ago.
That's a big building not to have access to that backside.
Well, they, they do, but it's not, you can't park there, it's only fire access only, so it doesn't have to be a fire lane. You know, it's, it's, it's just emergency, it's an emergency loop in back of the building, cars can't go through there. And I don't recall where, where it goes through the playground, we're getting off track here. I don't recall where, where it goes through the playground portion, if they're striping that there or whatnot, I don't think they are.
No, it's not going back that far. There is like a path all the way around there.
Yeah.
Dunkin' Donuts?
Oh, Dunkin' Donuts in the, in the back, around that building, that's supposed to be a fire lane. And it was awarded on a special permit for one of their changes of uses. And I think now, maybe it's already done, but they requested it be paved because of the brook, we, at the time, we said no, but I, I think maybe.
I can't call that, I remember being on CONCOM when that came in, that, that gravel back there was all designed to be part of the infiltration system, there was actually a, an area back there where there's an impermeable membrane and we made this very, very low profile settling pond. But it was never, it was never designed for anything beyond delivery traffic.
Okay, so just to get back to, on the member public report, so number two, planning board member protocol for communication. So this, what we've just done on the fire lane issue is exactly what we're talking about for the protocol. Where instead of someone just sending an email saying, Ken Howard, can you, can you figure this all out and let me know? It's, here's the question, please come to the meeting prepared or something to that effect, and we just have done it where we're all talking about the same issue, the fire lane and.
Damn, we're good, huh?
Good job, so that takes care of one and two, and then the only thing I'd like to add to that right now is that, another item for members is that that we, part of our policy rules regs that we're thinking about generating for the planning board and just how the planning board operates.
Oh, okay.
As, as part, as part of that, not zoning, not bylaws, our procedures.
Oh, internal, internal.
Internal to just the board. That, that. Strike that backwards, it's, this would be for applicants, it would be zoning, it would be that they have to, and I think it's written, we just need to enforce it, that they have to submit their stuff one week prior to, right now it says one week prior to the meeting.
Policy.
And that's policy, okay, but what about it being submitted one week prior to or three days or some, some set period of time prior to when Howard has to get the packets to us? Cause what's happening, am I correct?
You're, you're talking specifically about the, the public hearing we just had, where the applicant submitted his drawings to be included in the packet late Thursday afternoon, and I didn't have adequate time to be able to review them and advise the, the board of the planning office's opinion about the revised documents.
Well, if it's a week before, if, if it says a week before, then Wednesday.
Well, it's, it's a policy, but it doesn't, I, I believe it doesn't say on forms or even in the site plan section of the bylaws.
So could you, could you?
My understanding, it's only ever been a policy.
Okay, could you just verify how that is currently written and if we need to beef it up, cause it really should be policy, I would think. I mean, and it should be followed.
It should be, I think it should, it's a policy that should be more clearly noted in, on, in the bylaw, in the forms.
Yeah.
And.
The applicant knows, I'm, no, no mistake.
Yeah.
You know, enforcement of it is every week, every meeting.
Yeah.
Did we get this a week ago?
And, and, this is, this is a, a concern of the board that goes back for, for as long as I've been here.
Long as I've been here too.
Yeah, and on the website too.
It's inevitable.
Not too bad. We are through.
Rob, I'm not sure you should have signed this, cause you're not, you weren't a voting member.
He's alright, he's part of the.
Are you gonna make a motion to close or just?
Well, this, the special permit for parking rack.
Every, every region of the world.
He couldn't, he couldn't vote approving the project, but he can vote and, and sign on the actual decision.
I, I did it because of what they said.
Okay, he didn't sign the second page, does that matter?
So first you say.
We do.
That's the one you have to sign.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn planning board meeting.
Your second? Second, we're in discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Good job everyone.
Merry Christmas, that's yours.
No, no, it's the desk.